Council. Today is December nineteenth. We are not in conference rooms D and E. As you can see, we're back in the council chambers. First meeting back in quite a while. Our first order of business today is approval of the minutes from the November twenty first, twenty twenty-three meeting. If there's no additions or corrections, we'll entertain a motion to approve those men- minutes as written.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the minutes from the November twenty first, twenty twenty-three Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Next item on our agenda is the Council Administrator's Report. So just a little preface here. Administrator Kidd and I have talked and wanted to give her a regularly occurring opportunity to report out to the council and for the council to, you know, ask her anything or, you know, address concerns. So as we move forward, this will be something that features as a standing item on our Committee of the Whole Agenda's. So Administrator Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Adam Protheam. Counselors, as the President has mentioned, do know that it's a lot of items before you, but the good thing is you don't have to vote on any of it so that you'll have time to digest it and hopefully going forward, questions will be brought forward to me. And this is not a set in stone layout. If it's something else you want on this agenda to be reported out, I'm open to do that. So today I'll start with our department budget update. We have before you the budget that is pulled down from New World, and that is your largest packet that is before you. The city council's budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is approximately five million dollars. And of that, we capture about thirty-seven percent in personnel costs. Is that correct? Okay, about fifty-eight percent, I'm sorry. The thirty-eight percent comes from our second quarter spending that I have here is that we are ending second quarter at the end of December, which would be about fifty percent. We are about at thirty-eight percent of our allocation, which puts us about twelve percent below allocation for the city budget. Also, there is a question relative to the direction from the council's leadership. With the direction from the council's leadership and consistent with existing public purpose resolution that have been approved by the city council, central staff uses the departmental food and beverage account to cover approved food and beverage expenditures, for examples, meals, incidentals, to meetings, sports, and tourism events. And that's similar to what how your lunches was paid for today. So we do that. Our district budget, that should be before you, and it's a one-sheeter that it is also included in our budget, but we wanted to have it very accessible so you can just pull it out and look at it and see it. It should have District One, or Two, or Three, and so forth, where you can see your allocations per your district office. Again, your spending is only around thirty-nine percent. We will be forwarding to you a more specific, detailed discretionary spending and your consulting line item spending, and that will be facilitated by our accounting analyst, that's Felicia Jolly. That will be to you on a regular basis. You should get that somewhere around the first week of January. Also, Mr. McDaniel advised a few weeks back that all City of Birmingham business licenses expire on December the thirty-first, and it takes thirty to forty-five days before twenty-twenty-four calendar year license is issued. If there are districts with discretionary contracts or consulting appointments, that need to be reviewed and submitted before the end of the calendar year. Central staff needs your items no later than this Thursday, which would be December the twenty-first. I'm sure we will work with you all to get what is needed. Now moving to the critical piece, and that's staff and office concerns. You should have an organizational chart in front of you referencing with detail what central staff makeup is. I need somebody to carry the position control statement to them. The position control statement allows the council to see the positions that reside within the Department of the City Council. You will see, I think it's on page two, that there are two vacant positions within central staff. Right now, we know that our budget strength, the personnel cost, allows us an additional sixty-four thousand dollars to be spread amongst those two positions or to be given to one of the positions. And as you know, and you guys talked about it today and acknowledge that Ms. Johnson is retiring, so there will be at least the remainder of that allocation within her position through the end of this fiscal year that could be used to supplant one of the positions if you needed it, or if it was needed it, and needed in some way. And Ms. Johnson has been with us twenty-two years, that was said. Given the fact that she is leaving in December, in the month this June nine, and everybody is spreading, I did ask her if she would be willing to come back and to allow us to really acknowledge her service through a celebration in January, and she has agreed to do that. In light of that, we have already begun to transition her responsibilities, but most of her responsibilities, which include the contracting support work of District One, Seven, and Eight, will be transferred to Ms. Jolly. She will be taking care of that, so Mrs. Jolly will be in contact with the counselors of those districts. Paulette will do the resolutions. And one good thing about Ms. Johnson is she has a book about this thick with templates from every area of resolutions that we have given with several examples. So we hope to sustain the same quality of resolutions that you have had over the last twenty-one years. Also, Mrs. Stephanie will be taking over the invocation and assigning the pastors to come, and all other duties will be assumed by Ms. Conninghorn at this time. There is a calendar that should be before you for central staff availability throughout the end of the year. Connie, yes? We are going to have someone available through the end of the year. I will commence vacation on Thursday, and Jeff will take vacation next week, and I think Connie will commence this week, and then staff will be dispersed. But there will be a senior person throughout and available through the end of the year. And now to the departmental concerns. And one of the big glaring things is where you sit at this time, and it's the chamber. This has definitely been an undertaking for me. However, I do think that we are ahead and we are very much on target to be open for streaming across the system by January the second, and that announcement has gone out. So we are moving quite diligently to do that. As you know, anytime you have a renovation, there are some things that happens, a little bit happenstance. The staff was trained last week, or earlier this weekend, last week, on the system that has been installed. We have a new TriCaster system, it's smaller, and we've heard that if we had the Volkswagen version, we now have Cadillac. But we've got to learn all of the nuances around the Cadillac. So we have training. I've been told by IMS that someone from Diversified will be available on Tuesday to help with any other glitches that we may have. We will continue to engage them through the end of the year if they are available. Kim doesn't go out on vacation until the twenty-eighth, and I think she and Cody goes out on the twenty-eighth. So we will have someone on hand to work with them if they are available. But right now, we still have some minor things that we are going to cover over the next few weeks. Then some of the softer issues that you may see is we wanted to, the walls look pretty good now. I think they waxed them or polished them. We have engaged Ophelia Cox to see if she can pull out more moisture in the woods. The pink paneling of fabric that you see will be replaced where you see the design upon the fabric above over Mrs. Counselor Tate's right shoulder. That is where the monitors are gonna go, if you remember the countdown monitors. We have a local vendor message point who has those monitors, who they should be installed before January the second. And I would like to point out the diversity of staff. What you see now in that design that was done and put up by Felicia Jolly. So we work hard to try to make things look a little pleasant, but that will come down and that was go up, and then the fabric will be replaced. The fabric that you see, the red fabric here, that is coming down because the front of it where the city seal is, is really dirty. So we want to look at that. And also, Connie, if you would, I have here, and I should have started with this, there is about eighty-three thousand dollars left in our capital fund. And you could give this out as you're going. I don't know what, just tell it. About eighty-three thousand dollars in our capital fund. And what we did not want to do is to spend too aggressively and not have enough money to complete the chamber in the manner that is necessitated for you all to have a good viewing when you're giving a meeting. So now you should be receiving a proposed renovation of Conference Room A. We have already, under the diversified contract, we have a video conferencing TV that's in there that some of you should have noticed. It is sitting on our south wall, and that will be further supported by a conference room table that will support the video conferences with the right kind of equipment to include microphones. And on the north wall, if you look at the iteration there, that will be set up for counselors to go in and have interviews and not have to be out in the hall during the times that you're meeting with the media, or if you want to record something, you can do it in that room. We do plan to change the opening of that door so that it will open to the west of the room rather than to, I mean, to the east of the room rather than to the west, so that you will have more space standing, and you won't be behind the door. The door will be away from you when you're standing there. So that's gonna be something that we're going to do. So those are the things that we will continue to work on, and hopefully we will be able to use the other about forty-two thousand dollars to do other things that the council so desire to do, but that should be what is left in our budget unless there are some other things, some unexpected changes or reconfigurations that are needed here or in A that we haven't captured. But I think our budget is pretty much on target, and that should be where it is, and we will just wait for further directions from the President on how the council wants to move with that iteration of what A should look like. And then moving on to our constituent and complaints and concerns, I'm glad, happy to report that I haven't gotten any. I actually heard from a lady from Smithfield Estate who just asked, she called asking for housing assistance, so we put her in the right direction to get that assistance or to seek that assistance. But she also suggested that I ax the council to do in the future an angel tree for the elderly, that they also have needs such as the same as the schools, they need supplies and so forth. And then lastly, you will see on your list proposed travel times that we know about as central staff, and that's your NLC dates. Some counselors have begun to make reservations for that, and we encourage that. Pre-conference activities for the NLC starts March ninth. You see the dates for NCRC, April second to the fourth. BJCTA, State of the Transit, we've gotten invitations for that, January the ninth at the museum. And I think the President has the date for the State of the City at this time. I didn't get that prior to this, so I think you said January the sixteenth?
Yes, so Tuesday, January sixteenth. The mayor told me yesterday that he's gonna give the State of the City to the Kiwanis Club. So it should be noon, January sixteenth, at the Harvard Center.
And then lastly, the last few that we have is the Economic Development Academy. That date right now is January the thirty-first, from nine to three, location to be determined. The Business Council of Alabama Legislative Luncheon is February the seventh at Warehouse Alley Station, Montgomery, Alabama. And I think I left off at the convening of the state legislature, which is February the sixth, it's February the sixth. So that concludes my report, and I certainly welcome my last item. Any questions or directives by the council?
One thing relative to getting back in the council chambers is that I think we probably need to check in with Lee Frazier relative to the Granicus system, and, you know, we can always do things the old-fashioned way as we have been in Boutwell, but, you know, I'd just like to know if we're gonna try and utilize the iPad system as we have in the past, or, you know, just anything that we may need to know in advance of that meeting relative to the, you know.
Well, we have been meeting with IMS, and they have talked with the clerk. We've included him on that, in those conversations. I think that, I don't know if the IMS representative that's here, Mr. Mitchell, can speak to anything that he may know about the status of Granicus. We've just been told that it is integrated into the system, and so from there, we were waiting to hear from the clerk and IMS. Mr. Short, do you have anything to report?
Get the turn to mic on.
Good afternoon. Nelvin Short, IMS, serve as Deputy Director of Operational Technology. We have been in testing with Granicus. We had a trouble on yesterday. We are gonna retest tomorrow. We don't anticipate any trouble, and we should be ready to go live on January the second.
Okay, thank you.
So just a question. So prior to moving to Boutwell, we had been utilizing, you know, an iPad system that to, as each item was called up and the voting. Are we gonna go back to that? I mean, what's the expectation when we come back on January second?
The system will perform as it did prior to moving to Boutwell, other than maybe some modification for Granicus, which we don't have at this time, but it should perform the same.
Okay.
So, Mr. President, the reason why it didn't work at Boutwell because you had a dedicated secure Wi-Fi login with Granicus for just the chamber, or you'd only have specific rights to vote. So that's why it wasn't transferred over to Boutwell.
Okay. Counselor Abbott, you look like you have a question?
I do. I'm testing the new microphone. I wanted to confirm with Ms. Kidd the date. You said something was due this Thursday from us?
Oh, if you had discretionary contract requests that you wanted to get processed, we would like to-
Before Christmas, or what?
No, you want it in the system so that they, it can come up under the twenty-three business license rather than hold it and try to get a twenty-four business license because that license may not be available until February of twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. I just wasn't sure I understood, even though we have new microphones.
Yes, no problem. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Counselor Moore?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask about the Granicus on the different iPads, because I know I'm able to utilize it on my iPad, but I'm assuming that because I didn't have to do it in the chambers, it's okay?
Yeah, Granicus works no matter what. It's just when you do the actual voting, you have to be on a secure Wi-Fi in order to do that particular vote on that item.
Got it, okay.
Got a question.
Okay, just to the council, Administrator Kidd provided the organizational chart, which is something that we've discussed recently, and she also has descriptions for each of the positions, budgeted positions. So it's something that will, information that we'll share with you soon, and certainly, you know, follow up on it at the next Committee of the Whole. Does anyone have any, any questions for Administrator Kidd?
I do, but they're personnel related, so I don't know how, what an appropriate forum is for that. But I don't, I mean, there are some people on this list that don't show up in office. So what's our policy for people showing up in office?
Yeah, I think that I can speak to that very generally. It's one person that doesn't. And there were some issues around the environment during COVID and their inability or their position on how they are, their health cares run. So it was a decision of minds that I felt like everybody should work in an environment that's safe, because if there was an infection, they could not be treated, and then others could be exposed to that. She is working remotely and has been. I do get from her a task list on a weekly basis. She supports three offices in supplies and contracts. So it is my opinion that she is doing a yeoman's job. However, at the end of the day, that is a council's decision, but I can say that I can evaluate her, and she's just as competitive as any other staff person in getting her work to us and perform. I haven't heard anything differently, but if I do, I certainly would want to work with her to address that.
So related to that question, Administrator Kidd has also shared with me an employee handbook that, you know, would, I haven't had time to really digest it, but it should, in theory, contain policies for the department relative to remote work and, you know, all sorts of other things.
Yeah, well, it doesn't because that one was in twenty seventeen, pre-COVID, and remote was not an option. But again, that becomes a present-day conversation, and either the council wants it or not, so we can do that.
One of the things that we can consider is, and I think there are some updates that need to be done to that, but through the Administration Committee, that, that document can be reviewed, and the council doesn't have currently an official employee policy for, specifically for the council. So this employee handbook exists, but it's not the official policy of the department. So what I'm saying is, is that, you know, when people come through and they're, go through their employee orientation, that there's, you know, they're not asked to sign off on a departmental policy. So this document that Ms. Kidd has that needs to be updated could potentially serve as the department's policy, and it could address issues as what, such as what you're bringing up.
Yes.
I think that would be best practices. We should have done that.
Yeah, but the last time, I will say, the last time it was done was under Lee Loder's administration, that the council adopted a handbook policy. Most of those things are probably not directly, they're not, we had a harassment policy, we had a time and attendance policy, but with staff that came after that administration, nobody signed, have signed a handbook relative to the council's department since that time. So, but again, to make it official, we try to get buy-in from every counselor. I've sent the handbook out, not the last six years, because it just wasn't something that was done or received. It's that you get the feedback on it, but it never gets out of committee. So I think with some intentionality, I can share the book with everybody with edits, and so all edits certainly are received by me. Then it's up to the council to take it and bring it forward. And I would think a good practice with that would be the same as we adopt an organizational at the top of the quadrennial, if that is put out, in case there are changes like this remote, how we're gonna handle that, or how we're not gonna handle that, then those things can be adopted and we can act accordingly.
So anticipate, you know, follow up on that. All right. Ms. Kidd, does that conclude your report?
Yes, for me.
All right. Counselor Tate?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So I just heard what Counselor Williams said about the remote working. So is that remote, the policy gonna be across the board for people that work for counselors as well, or is this a standard policy that's gonna be just for central staff?
I think the intent is for it to apply to central staff. You know, something that we're, we are gonna have to figure out is the nature of the relationship between the employees in each of the district offices relative to the council administrator, because that relationship, as it currently stands, is not clearly defined. And so that's for us to determine, you know, on this organizational chart, exactly what that relationship looks like. In the past, the way it has worked is, you know, going all the way back to Jarvis Patton, Ms. Kidd's predecessor. Mr. Patton basically managed everyone, you know, that was in the department, the, what do they call them, the committee assistants? Yeah. So obviously, we haven't had that as a operating model in a long time. Ms. Kidd, pre-pandemic and maybe a little before then, used to have a weekly committee roundup meeting where she met with each of the, what we call, you know, chiefs of staff in each office once a week. And that was something that, you know, hasn't been, hasn't carried over into the current quadrinium. So in any case, I think that's a very valid question, and that's something that we have to figure out.
Yes, so if the goal is to, you know, I'm just looking at the protection of, you know, individuals, you know, in case something comes up, like you got a person working remote, is it a standard policy that's gonna protect people if they need to be at home working remotely?
Right.
So we gonna create, you know, a policy for people. It is something, because what I'm hearing is evidently needs to be something in place to protect an individual that needs to be at home. If they need to be at home working remotely, then it protects you. But if you need, if you're a committee assistant, you're working for a counselor, I guess that's at the counselor's discretion is what I'm hearing.
Right, yeah, that's how it operates currently.
So if, if, because, you know, I'm looking, you know, at this in another facet.
Yeah, so I think, you know, the, at the end of the day, what we're trying to define is what the expectations are, and, you know, puts some, some boundaries around, you know, what's allowed and what isn't, if that makes sense. what's allowed and what isn't, if that makes sense. So. Anybody got any follow-up to that?
If I may just close, um, or say, I do think that there needs to be some consistency. For me, working as ambiguous as I have for 21 years, I can work any fashion that you guys put forward, but I need to know what the expectations are. Uh, and it has been very disconcerting to staff that you're in the same department and you're operating under two or 10 different standards. There are nine different standards sometimes for district office and then central staff certainly has a standard that is, um, put in a fashion that it needs to be measured, it's scrutinized more. And that, I can say to you all, has not given you all the best product, because it can be, it's only so much I can do to keep morale up. But when they, when I'm asking them to do X, Y, Z, and we're not a big department, people are talking, they're friends, and they hear that council staff isn't doing it, then it does get to be, I don't have much gas to get them to do something differently. So, um, as much as can be aligned, that's all I ask, because counselors do have the right to do what they want with their staff. But I would, uh, propose to you that we all your staff, um, and we would like to be treated, um, accordingly as every other person on the council's floor, whatever that may be.
Okay. All right, so I think that concludes that portion of the, uh, agenda item. So next up, we're gonna have Mr. Daryl Perkins of Master Solutions, um, talk to us about HB 378. Welcome, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Counselor, Mr. President, pro temp, staff, good afternoon. I recognize this approaching the three o'clock hour, I'm about to talk about brownfields. I have with me, uh, my cousin, Jayden Perkins, who's just coming out, just finishing her first semester at Yale, so I'm really very proud of her. And Nan Baldwin's just walked out, Nan's been working on brownfields for another decade, including part of the Brownfield Authority, uh, that's in place. So as you can tell, there's a lot of information, we certainly won't cover all of it. I will try to highlight certain things in, in order as best I can. And the important thing to me is get to your questions if you have them as quickly as possible. So while I've given you a lot of documents, I'm gonna go through them rather rapidly, if you will, and then again, the Q and A is important. That's okay, Mr. President. Quickly, how we got started this whole process a little year ago. Got approached by some folks in the manufacturing industry, uh, probably January, February of 2022, uh, saying that this helps solve the brownfield problem, they want to, they want to bring some resources to the table and how that might work. Well, a lot of us have been working on brownfield problems for decades. And there has never been a quick, easy, simple solution. It's just, it was just too darn complicated, and it's still complicated. But one thing this group did was, they said, we're gonna put some resources on the table and we're gonna bring an environmental law firm to the table. And we're gonna do a, a study of 48 states to see what the best practices are. That was unique, hadn't, we had never done that before. So this firm did that, they literally came, studied 48 states. And they came up with some best practices, which came into a draft of some legislation. So again, I mentioned, we started in January, February of, of 22, getting ready for the 23 session. So it took a year of studying, working, talking, getting the draft ready, redrafting the draft over and over again, before we finally had some, a document ready for the, for March of 23 legislative session. And we got that passed. Matter of fact, in the House, uh, out of 105 members, I think we had 86 yeses and about eight or nine abstains. We had no no votes. In the Senate, it was 32 to zero, so it was, it was rather landmark. And it does a few things. So to, I'm gonna refer some sheets here, I'm, I came up with an FAQ sheet, that should be in your packet. It looks like this. Okay.
We got it, I think it's part of our digital packet.
And, and so why I did that was, even I'm not gonna go over all the questions on here. It was just very simply, when I start, and for years I did this, when I talked about brownfields, I would always ask this question, well, have you done a phase one study? Have you done this? Well, quite frankly, the more I got into it, I figured out I was saying the wrong thing. So I really wanted to kind of highlight, starting with what's a brownfield. What is a phase one study? What is a phase two study? Because we, the terminology, the nomenclature is important to get to the, the, the questions and then the answers we really need. So when you look at it, when you look at this FAQ page, uh, it tells you what phase one study is. It's just a matter of looking at the documents and the records of any company. The phase two study, which is the really in-depth one, is when you start doing soil samples for that company. So while the phase one is important, the phase two tells you what's what. So if you look, if a company says, yes, we want to do a phase one, they look at their records and that will decide whether or not they wanna go do a phase two and then going forward from there. So now, again, I'm gonna go very quickly, I wanna get to your questions. So if we get a chance, look at the FAQ. There's also a talking points memo, it's a two-page, I'm gonna refer that for a couple of minutes. It's a two-page. That third paragraph talks about locations. The problem has always been, not that these sites weren't there, we've had these sites for years. Matter of fact, they've been here since the existence of our city. The problem is those sites of brownfields are not usable. But they are rail-served, they are closed by freeway, they are flat, they often have the right count, right-sized water and sewer lines available. But they're brownfields, so nobody wants to touch them. Now, 20 some years ago, uh, the, the legislature did a staff at this. It was the Alabama Land Recycling and Equity Development Act. Councilwoman Smithman cares who, who, who's, who shared, who did that for us in the Senate. So Senator Smithman did. So here's what that did, it set up what's called the VCP, a voluntary cleanup program. Now, that was great, it was a really good start back in 2001. So all the companies that were willing to voluntarily do this, jumped into it. So some sites came on, on land for a while, but then they were the ones who didn't want to touch their sites. So these are the sites that have often been in companies' database for years. Companies are closed down, manufacturing's gone away, steel is, has taken different forms, and they're just sitting there. Here's the problem. Before this bill was passed, if I own a site, now, what's that called is, I'm the responsible party if I own a site. Now, in the industry, they call it the potential responsible party. Look, one clear gray area, so potential responsible party or responsible party. If I own that site, now you lawyers are good, potential, not saying so. If I look at this site, even though I've owned it, I've owned it for 150 years, if I think I wanna do a cleanup, if I even start tinkering with this site, I have to report everything, declare what I report, and then clean up everything. Just the cleanup alone is expensive, and why I say cleanup across the board. Now, most companies, if you've owned this site for a decade or a century, you pretty much know what's in that land beneath you. But they still had to approach it as we had to clean up everything, because that was the law. So what this bill does, it says, okay, you're the, you're the potential responsible party or actually responsible party. Here's what it does now. You can take a look, you can do a phase one, which you probably already have your own records, do a phase two, do a source, start doing soil sampling, soil studies. You can then decide whether or not to go forward or not, and that was key. So if you wanna go forward, there, there's a process for that, or you can just shut it down and not. So now you can say, well, that has some pitfalls, yes it does. But that property was gonna be sitting there regardless, that gives them a chance to do something with it potentially. So if it looks like it's okay, you, you can go forward the process, which we'll talk about in a couple of minutes. On the same page, I'll highlight one more thing. It, it, uh, it talks about what other states have done with sites. So Tennessee, Florida, Georgia, they have put, on the state level, they have made available tens of million and hundreds of million dollars to municipalities and counties for site development. Just here, let's go develop sites, and here's why that's important. When we're competing with other sites in other states, and the other state says, we have a fund, we're giving this, this site ready, or it is ready, and we can't say that, we are at disadvantage. So that's why Tennessee, Georgia, and Florida, and other places have put so much money on the table for citizen counties to access for site development. Part of the plan from last year, if you remember the, the, the game plan that passed, it was, it was great, but for the seed act, there was no money put in that for site expansion and plans. So that needs to go back and be, and be fixed, but this goes along with that, if you will. So if we get a chance, look at this two-page. Now. Let's talk about this. I think I wanna just go through of the process of I own a site, and what do I do now? This bill has passed, yay, what's next? So, again, I'm the responsible party. I do a phase one, I do a phase two, I think I'm comfortable going forward in a voluntary plan. So now I have to submit to ADM, a, a voluntary assessment plan, which ADM has to approve. Are we good so far, should I stop and clarify anything? So I'm at the point of, I own a site, I've done my phase one, I've done my phase two, I want to do something. I submit a, a assessment plan to ADM, which they have to approve. That gets approved, and then I submit my voluntary cleanup plan. Again, here's one thing that's different, I can decide not to, so that gives them some flexibility. Going forward, I'm going forward. Now, here's other thing that's helpful. You can also create a, a brownfield development district zone. Now, how's that work? The, the company has to approach, in this case, the city of Birmingham, and say, we want to clean up this site. We want to work with you to create a brownfield development zone. So essentially, you are creating a, a division and authority, if you will. And what's helpful is that authority, like any authority, can apply for state and or federal funds, particularly federal funds. So that's one of the really good things about this legislation. It gives a company the ability to create this authority or this district that can go after federal dollars for the cleanup. And that's an important part of this. So that's, that is really different, really impactful, and really cool. Now, ADM is, is following along the path through the assessment plan and then the implementation plan. At any point, ADM can step in and say, well, wait a minute, we don't like the way this is going, we need to do more of this. And, and they either have to respond or to get kicked out, and they can't go in further. So they go through all the process, they go through assessment, they go through a plan, uh, they get the sign-off, and now they have a letter saying they're in compliance. In the meantime, you guys have worked with them to create a, a brownfield district. So, so let's look at that for a second, because this is important. That district, because there's an authority can, can clap for dollars. Anyone can join as, as voluntary. Most districts, you know, probably wouldn't be citywide, let's take the easy one, the one we've all been talking about for 20 years, 10 years, Inzley Works. So let's say, well, it's not US Steel anymore, it's now DePond Steel, uh, it's probably another discussion one day. So let's say, we, we're working with that site, and they want to take that, and I actually toured this about a month ago, and that Inzley Works site, probably 600 acres, there's about 400 acres that actually up, up for use, if you will, so that 400 acres. But there's probably, that probably there is, there's other acres around that, that the old US Steel owned, that probably takes it up to 1,800 acres, and other folks have property around there. So let's say all those landowners voluntarily decide, we're gonna process it, we want you to help us create a brownfield zone. You don't have to do anything, there's no commitment from you guys other than saying yes and taking the vote. That's, the others have to do the other work, including going to the legislature, getting approval, we don't have home rule, has to happen. Create the authority, you guys appoint folks there, because you're the, you're the governing body, but then like Inzley Works, it acts on its own. It has a board, it has an executive director, they have to raise a bang and go do it. So that's how all that stuff kind of plays in. But again, only if they go through the whole process, get in compliance, and stay in compliance. Now, let's say you identify, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit, I actually missed something, in your assessment, let's say you identify we have lead, petroleum, and asbestos in this property, you tell ADM that. So therefore ADM, we have lead, asbestos, and petroleum products. So we're gonna clean up lead, asbestos, and petroleum. Good job. ADM comes in and says, well, wait a minute. We found not just lead, asbestos, petroleum, we found arsenic and PCBs. So now, if you cleaned up lead, petroleum, asbestos, you have some liability protection from that, because you declared it and you cleaned it up. But if they find something else, you don't have liability protection for the stuff that's, was found that you didn't clear and clean up. Now, that's an important point, I wanna make sure we understand that. In this bill, you only have liability protection from what you declare and what you clean up to the proper standards. Now, no standards have changed from EPA standards, that's still the overriding standard. So we have a law there in standards, they're still by EPA. So there, there are a couple of things you have in this. You can join a, 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 a brownfields district or zone to get federal dollars, and you have some liability protection, but only protection of what you declare and clean up. And, and we fought long and hard to, A, make it right, B, understand it, and have other folks understand it. So I wanna make sure that there are any questions about this, because the liability protection is important. If you declare it and you clean it up, you're protected. But if you, if you don't clean it up, and they find it, you, you still can be sued. Now, you can still be sued if there's harmful stuff in the air. So it, it doesn't, it, it's, it's not whole liability protection, but it's, it's quite a bit far. I wanna hit one more thing.
If you have a question, I brought my code book with me.
The words are important. I passed out one, but I didn't do it, we passed out one of these. If you look on the front page, this is what Atlanta did, I, I bet some of you have been to that Atlantic station. This was a brownfield. And this was one of the places that we looked at that did it. North Carolina is one, and I think the, the next was in, in Florida, I believe. Nashville, Tennessee. So those are three examples of places that have done a really good job of cleaning up big sites. But it does not have to be a big site. So we talked about Inzley Works, 400 acres, but also Councilmore, right in front of Real Birmingham, uh, on 50 Fifth and First South, there's an old cleaner that's been demolished. That's a brownfield site, it's probably a quarter of an acre, but it's a gateway quarter of acre. So there's an EPA grant, not just do a phase one, not do a phase two, but do the cleanup. So they, so that, they're gonna put that back on land. So I, I think I mentioned this, Commerce likes to have about 700 sites statewide that they can market. They're down about 425 sites. So Commerce likes this because they, they get more sites to, to market for site developers, site selectors. ADM likes it because it gives them more work to do. When we first started talking about this, when we went to our Republican friends in our state legislature, we talked about equity development, which it is. There's a lot more than that, it's a public health issue, so we have to get it right. We can't just place another community, so we have to get it right. So while this bill is not perfect, it's, it's unique, it, it goes a long ways toward addressing, it's, it's probably something more to do, but it's a really good start on trying to solve a problem that has been unsolvable for decades in our community. Now, I have probably been reading this stuff for the last week, so I could go another hour, uh, easily, but I won't. I will stop and take questions, and I have the bill in front of me and the code book. If I can't answer it, I will tell you I can't answer it. If I can't answer it, I will tell you I can't answer it.
Yeah, I see you over there, Councilmore. I wanted to ask, so how does the bill incentivize brownfield cleanup?
Well.
Can you give me a short answer to that?
Well, two ways. The ability to, to do the brownfield zone or district that allows you to go after federal dollars, that's one. But the second is, if you join, there is a one-time five hundred acre fee that you have to pay to ADM. So.
Five hundred dollars per acre?
Per acre.
Right.
Uh, so again, taking the Enzley Works analogy, that's four hundred acres times five hundred bucks, two hundred dollars. One-time fee, that goes to ADM, because sometimes the EPA standards change. So this pool of money, this brownfield, this brownfield development fund will help you offset some of that in future times. If, if, let's say in today's EPA, you can have twelve particles per million of some chemical. And that changes, it's, it's a higher standard, and you have to go back and clean up for that. This, this development of fund will help you go back and clean up. So there, there are three, three things, it gives you liability protection, it gives the ability to go after federal dollars. And, and in case the EPA standards ever change and become more restrictive, there's a fund that'll be able to go back and, and, and clean, and help bring that back up to the, to new set of regulations, so, so those are the three ways.
Okay, so who would have to, is it the landowner who has to initiate the uh, formation of, of a, of a district?
The, the landowner or owners will come to the city for permission. And then, like anyone else, you guys will have the ability, they will, you know, to appoint the, the, the board. Just like you do for any other authority, hire executive director, have bylaws, and they are governed by that. So you could have a number of landowners, one big one, a number of small ones. It could be the, the, the Woodland Brownfield Development Authority, or, or the, 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 the West End, the East Enslie. And, and you have some kind of name like that on there, just to separate, but yes, the owner starts it, they have to come to you to say, and, and has to go to state, again, has to go to state legislature, you asked that question once. And at the bottom of page twenty-eight on the bill, it tells you, you have to have legislative permission to actually set up the authority. So, and you guys would have to do that, the, the owners would have to probably hire some lobbyists. I don't know who put that in the bill, imagine that.
Councilmore?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Perkins, for the, the presentation, and just all the information. Uh, I know, uh, the top part of my district is, you know, the North Birmingham community. Where several neighborhoods, you know, kind of would fall in something that would be considered a brownfield. Now, I haven't been told that these are brownfield areas, but I would imagine that they are. And so, um, you're saying that pretty much the owners of these different spaces would have to engage us first? We couldn't, I guess, go about it a different way in terms of being able to identify brownfield areas within our district?
Well, the owners would have to engage you to set up the brownfield district.
Gotcha.
They would have to, uh, address ADM to set up the voluntary assessment program, and then the implementation, implementation program. So the owners would have to, to, to talk to ADM and, and set up a, first an assessment program. And then a cleanup program, it's called the BCP, the voluntary cleanup program. So they had to deal with, so it's a lot of things going at one time, in short version. So they had to deal with ADM on setting up the voluntary part. Again, now, once you're in, you're in. You have to, you have to tell them, everything's in there, if you decide to go in. You, you, you can decide not to go in, close out the hole back up, and, and, oh, well. But if you're in, you have to declare everything, and you have to clean up everything. But the other way helps, Councilman, I forgot this part. It limits what you have to, have to assess. And the assessment costs a lot of money. If, if you're only cleaners, you pretty much know what's in the soil. You, you've got the records, or you're in a big company. But you don't have to assess for, you know, for radon, if you know during where there was no radon in there. Now, on the back end, they find radon, you're still in trouble. But as long as, as long as you assess and clean it up, and, and you're accurate, you're fine. So that's, that's part of the limited liability protection.
Do, um, I'll come back to you, Councilor Abbott. So this legislation passed last year?
Uh, late April. No, it's, it's passed this, this last session, so yes, April of twenty-three, yes. So it is, is state law now, yes.
Are, are we aware of anyone, you know, locally or regionally, who's, um, interested in taking advantage of, of this?
Because it's new, and because it's complicated, and it hadn't been socialized properly. The answer is, yes, I do. And I, I can name the company later, uh, but yes, there are some companies. Matter of fact, there are some companies that are probably interested in doing a gifting of, of some, of, just to get it off their books. In the past, you couldn't do that, because again, the responsible party, even, you know, if you got it, you own it. And now, now you can gift something. So there are some companies who, who are gonna do the, the phase one, the phase two, make sure what's in there. And they may gift some land to a, the, the right authority, yes, we do know so. I wouldn't want to say public, but I can tell you offline.
Councilor Abbott?
I just wanted to ask if the phase one and the phase two. If those, if that's how you find out what's in your land, like you said, if you cleaned up four chemicals and there were two left, you were still liable for the two that were left. Would all the chemicals be identified in your phase one and two, or do you have to do additional testing to find something else?
That's a very good question. It's, 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 did you, did you want to, I thought you were gonna come in and help me out? So yes, uh, part, part of this is, you, you, you have the right to only test what your records show are in there. But now, when ADM comes in, they're gonna test more expansively. So if you test for those, you know, those three or four, and, and all of a sudden you come in and PCBs are in there. You, you are, your liability protection is just left. So, so ADM will test for more, and they will verify more, because they have the ability to do so.
And then when they find more, and you freak out, and you decide not to do the project, can you just walk away?
So, let's try to think of how to answer that question properly. You, you can't just walk away at that point. Uh, because it is public knowledge, and if it's really bad, you still have, somebody has to clean it up regardless. So what ADM, the first thing they will do is, they will try to work with you, sixty days of their time to say, let's clean this up. Now. You could walk away, but ADM will still have to clean it up, because here's why. They have the, the, the responsibility of public good. If they find something that is harmful to the environment, to people, uh, ADM has the ability, and, 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 and and the, yeah, the ability to clean it up, and, and, and they will. You know, by law, they would have to clean it up. So if ADM finds it, and if it's, now, if it's just bare down, and there's no harm, no files, one thing. But the question is, if they find something on the back end that is harmful to the public good, that has to be cleaned up. So there is no walking away from that. Maybe the company can, but they're still open to a lawsuit, because they didn't clean up everything they said. But it still has to be cleaned up once it's found.
Okay, so that explains the reason that all the owners of brownfields just let them sit there.
That's the exact reason, yes.
So we're not, this new legislation didn't protect anybody from that happening, so if they still want to sit on it, they just can?
Yes, that's, if they decide not to go forward, there's nothing we can do about it. But, so, that's the status quo, and that's, will be the case regardless. So, yeah, there are gonna be some cases where folks are just not gonna go forward, and so we may never know that.
Okay, so if ADM does the cleanup, who pays for it?
So ADM, ADM has, they're, they're fun also. ADM will work with EPA to come in, and this, you know, we never want to mention super fund around here. But of course, is, uh, what's called the NPL, the National Parochial List. If, if your site is on that NPL, which is a, a federal database, you're not eligible for it anyway. But ADM will have, again, it, it's, it's the level we're talking about. Is it a, a extreme risk to the public? And, and, and once you find that, you know, that has to be cleaned up, combination of ADM and EPA.
Okay, at no charge to the owner of the property?
I don't know. I, I suspect, like all, like all things, that once they're there, once they found it, and I'm thinking through as you, as I, yes. The, that, that company is liable for that, because they didn't clean it up properly, so yes. Uh, back to the original, uh, potential responsible party, so that person is still liable. Finds everything else, so yes. I had to think it through as, as I was answering questions, I had to kind of redirect myself, but yes, man.
Yeah, because sometimes the owner isn't the one that did it. You know, the guy that did it's dead, and has been for a long time, and the owner of the property may have bought it not knowing. Of course, that's his stupidity, but, you know.
Well, so, we, we get into another area there. If, if the original owner, uh, is passed, and somebody else has it. Then it has to be determination of, is that new person the responsible party or the non-responsible party? You know, it'd be, that's where we need our environmental lawyers to the table, and I don't want to go too far down this thing, because I'm, I'm probably getting maxed out here. Uh, there are some really good legal firms, environmental firms out there, that I, I would urge you to, to talk to. Uh, I will tell you next steps, if I may, Mr. President. Two quick things I would do. I would have a, a, if I could wave a wand, a citywide database of the bigger properties. And a database by council districts of some of the smaller properties, that, that might be able to clean, get cleaned up. So each council person knows a few places, the council district, the mayor knows the, the bigger stuff, and you can decide the hierarchy, if you will.
Chief Mitchell, aren't we, isn't PEP, uh, doing that type of assessment, they're putting together that type of database? Yeah, I thought so.
Can I see it?
Okay. Councilor Williams?
My question was more probably down a liability rabbit hole, but, um, and, and maybe this is more for an environmental attorney, because it sounds like we're getting into super fund percentages, but, um. And I, and, and Mr. Perkins, obviously, the default is, if you're dealing with ADM, just tell them it's Alabama Power Coal Ash, and it's wiped away. But, um, I, uh, really want to know about the gifting process of property. Did that change with this legislation in terms of the liability trail? Or is it still the same in terms with the gifting? Because what I'm worried about is the hypothetical of property owner A gifting an authority that the city sets up a piece of property that turns into, it should have been a super fund site. And then is the city then responsible for the cleanup? Would be my concern, is what liability we would take on as the city through the authority? And it, and that might, it's, that might be an attorney question.
So I have a kind of a top-level answer for that, I don't want to get too deep, but research has said, let's talk to environmental lawyers. But remember, first of all, if it's on that I've got the exact acronym, hold on, actually, I wrote it down, I don't have to guess. The Comprehensive Environmental Response Conversation Liability Act, that's the super fund stuff. There's a database of that. And within that database, that, that's for the NPL, the National Parochial List. If you're on that list, hands off, can't touch that regardless.
Sure.
So the gifting, again, the, the city wouldn't take it unless that, that, that owner had done a phase one, phase two. I'm, I'm pretty sure of that. So the, the, you kind of know what you're getting. So, but now to answer that very specific question, it's actually in the, I'm not gonna look for it right now, but it's actually in here. As long as a city, the broad topic is actually called a person, hold on, I can and for this definition, a person is a authority, organization, business owner, or municipality. If they get gifted something, as long as they're not part of the problem, yes, they are protected. Now, if the city gets something and releases something, no, but that wouldn't happen. So to answer your question, as long as due diligence is done, and the city receives something, they have liability protection also.
Okay. Yeah. Clear as mud to me.
Me too.
So, um, Councilor Abbott, did you have something else?
Well, I just, I did think of something that really, if I just, if I own a brownfield, and it's full of all kinds of poisonous chemicals, and I just quit paying the taxes and let some moron from California buy it, then who's liable then?
So.
You know, like, they pay the taxes and think, why who, I just got four hundred acres, and it turns out it's full of mess. Can people do that, or is that?
Has that been done? Yes. The way I understand the rules, it still goes back to responsible party, which is the original owner, and potential responsible party, which is the new owner. Once that changes hands, I think that's where some liability questions are, but I actually don't have a good answer. And I, I don't want to go down there, because I'm not, let's get to some environmental lawyers in here. Because that, that's actually a very delicate question, I'm just, I don't have a, a good, I have a gray area answer, I don't have a good, clear, black and white answer.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmore?
And I, I think that's kind of, you know, where I'm sitting right now, uh, because I do have several acres of land within the district that are just kind of sitting, right? Uh, with no type of use, and I think it's because of this very reason. And so I guess my question would be, uh, as a counselor, what could I do to help to motivate, uh, some of this activity to take place?
So I think what Mr. Mitchell just talked about with, with your folks is helpful, that, that, that database is being created, both large parcels and small parcels. But the other part is, socialize this to your business owners. To A, let them know the bill is out there, but B, if, if there's some due diligence done, and they want to gift it, get it off your books. Let's, let's, let's create some, some, some brownfield districts. Get them together, get some parcels together, give these things back on, on, on roll, and, and let's, let's do some development. Let's do some industrial park space.
So, so the purpose of the legislation was to really, uh, encourage cleanup and reuse of these brownfield sites. And the most compelling thing that I've heard thus far is that if you create these districts, then you can then become eligible to apply for some form of federal assistance. So, i.e. if I create this district, uh, and a authority to administer the cleanup, then I can potentially get free money to, to clean up the property.
Federal dollars with a proper match, but there are a lot of federal dollars out there. This is part of, 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 of bipartisan infrastructure law, there's a lot of federal dollars for brownfield cleanup out there right now. I can't tell you how long it will last in the system, but it's, it's out there now. Might not be there three or five years from now, but it's out there now.
So, all right, so say we, we form, um, a district, or we allow the formation of a district. Um, and there's an authority to manage it. The, that authority applies for funding, and they, they get a bunch of free money to clean up property. And so then the property owner gets their property cleaned up at greatly reduced cost. And now they can own it and reuse it, and start making money off of it again.
And pay Appledome taxes, and hire people.
Right, I'm just trying to understand, like, the incentive structure here, um.
But if, if, if you're the, that manufacturing company, is, is, it, the, going after federal dollars is important, but the liability protection is important.
I understand that, too. I mean, in terms of the, the greater city of Birmingham's economic development interest. I mean, one of the things that is, um, of concern to us is that we don't have, uh... any or many of these large sites, you know, five hundred-plus acres, um, available for new manufacturing. I mean, a lot of these companies are choosing to do greenfield development where they don't have those same types of issues to to deal with. So relative, compared to greenfield development, this is still, you know, not exactly easy.
At all. But it's, it's what we have, and it's a whole lot better than what we had this time last year.
Right.
Uh, and most states don't have this. We checked. Mr. President, counsel, any more questions for me? Thank you for your time, Madam.
Okay. Please let us know, um, I mean, what what, I think this is good, because, um, let's just hypothetically say that there is a landowner or multiple ant landowners that are contemplating formation of one of these districts. I think it's good that we're learning about it now, um, versus, you know, in the midst of trying to, um, you know, consider the the formation of one of those districts. Um, but please let us know if there's, you know, further conversation, because I think, obviously, um, this is a complicated issue, and we, you know, probably need some more education to fully under-understand it.
I would urge you to have some in-depth conversations with one of the really good environmental firms in the region between Atlanta and here. Uh, I've probably maxed out my knowledge base, but there are some really per good firms out there that can give you more in-depth information.
Okay.
Counsel, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have, uh, discussion of the upcoming twenty twenty-four, twenty-fifth, twenty-five, um, fiscal year budget process. I believe, uh, Counselor Smithman, um, had a suggestion for us to consider relative to, uh, how we approach the next fis- fiscal year budgeting process.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and Ms. Kidd can kind of help me, because she and I have been working for the last few months, uh, really making it more participatory on our end and for the public. Um, a lot of times when we do our one town hall, it's after the mayor presents the budget. And so we were thinking before he submits it that we will have a town hall, um, really kind of getting the council getting together to put together their priorities before we receive the budget as well, and just having more dialogue with the mayor. Um, that's kind of just like a a summary of everything. So, Ms. Kidd, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think your concern to me was, uh, after the conversation of the open meeting with the constituents, um, and you said there was nothing that you could do because the budget had been cast. Um, so we thought about, uh, because nothing has changed since the law changed. Usually, in times past, the constituents did come at that time, and the counselors could make, again, recommendations to the mayor to, um, change some things based on what they've heard from the constituency and what they felt was something worthy that could be done. And it was submitted to the mayor, and sometimes it got changed, and sometimes it didn't, based on the conversation with the mayor and the council. In this instance, it would just be putting the constituents in a situation to have a voice. And as we know, they always don't come with a reasonableness of what can happen, but at least you would have heard it. And from there, the council can then choose, as we are talking through the budget, just as we submit a budget, and other department heads submit budgets, the comments from the citizens that the counselors have heard can also be submitted at that same time. And so how that comes out is pretty much up, still will be up to the mayor. It would not change what he could and cannot do.
Yeah, and to go into more detail about, I just pulled it up, I think everybody's got a copy of it. Um, having these town halls, almost having different tables where different items are discussed, public safety, streets, stormwater, code enforcement, sidewalks, housing, demolition of grown lots, and then create postcards for submission prior to the meetings as to the concern and the need of the citizens. Uh, create a pre-assessment that can be sent to neighborhood officers to determine what top three to five areas will be prioritized. Um, and really, this town hall is really being able to pull a lot of the constituents who may not be able to listen to council meetings due to work, or who may not, um, tune in as much to really almost all of our meetings. So, or people who can't make neighborhood meetings, because if we're honest, neighborhood meetings are kind of inconvenient if you work, like, if it's at four thirty or it's during lunchtime, I think Council Pro-TM has, like, meetings at lunchtime, that's not really convenient for people. Um, and then central staff would be there to assist us, and then they would help us to gather and codify it, and then they'll be able to, um, collect all relevant numbers around best practices of of top areas determined, um, and then different budgets, and then from there, we'll be able to discuss with the mayor, uh, our findings, and then be able to form our budget priorities. And also, um, Council Pro-Pro-TM came up with this idea early this year about doing a video about the budget process, so people can learn. We may have to do like a book for maybe, um, the elderly, and then for people who are like, what, twenties to fifties can have, like, the video. So I just wanted to know everyone's thoughts, and thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to, uh, speak. Um, we can do this, we can't do this, but I was just trying to see how we can work around what the mayor council asks us about the budget.
So to respond to thoughts on that, I think that it would be helpful to have the administration and their staff there. If we're going to set up something that has, uh, a need for, um, police, fire, public works, whatever other department, um, it would be beneficial for us to actually have the mayor's staff there that relates to whatever those different areas are, um, for a lot of reasons. One of which is they are the, uh, the, uh, subject matter, alleged subject matter expert in that field for the city. Um, and we all know that the council has no control over any of those departments, so having the public come to us asking for departmental changes, um, to me, seems like that we need the administration there, so that they that, you know, they can reflect that. I do agree that that needs to be well in advance of whatever departmental hearings are held. I don't know if that's the correct term, but budget hearings or whatever, um, so that that department head or deputy department head, whatever it might be, can understand what has been asked. And I think that some of the things that the public request, um, also can be probably solved, um, within a budget constraint. Maybe the deputy or departmental head, or whatever it is, chief, whatever it is of the department, might not have understood there was a specific issue. So it doesn't make sense to me for us to do this if the administration is not there, since we have no, as a matter of fact, not only do we not have the legal right, it's illegal for us to change anything. So, anyway, those are my thoughts.
And it's not really, you know, changing the legal right, it's just making it more participatory budget, because right now, what happens is we we're given the budget, you know, at a council meeting. We have six weeks to review it, which isn't a long time, but we can't change that. We have one public hearing, and then that's it, and then we vote it up or down, and that's the end of it. I think the most we've been involved was COVID, and that was six out of nine of us, but that was only because that was really, um, extreme conditions and circumstances that we had. But just, you know, our number one job is to pass the budget, and, you know, I always have to put myself in the shoes of, what if I wasn't a counselor, how would I feel about knowing about the budget? And knowing that a lot of people, you know, professional people, et cetera, I ask them, how do you feel about the budget? And they're just kind of like, oh, it's fine, you guys got it, but it's not, we have it, we need to hear what you want. And just really being able to get the citizens to voice more of their concerns other than the people at the neighborhood meetings.
Mr. President, Cheryl. Um, also, I believe within your proposal, uh, there has never been a budget hearing, a town hall meeting where it's discussing the budget and the intricacies of those topic matters, that we would not ask the, uh, department heads and those who are more informed about that subject matter not to, we we, you always have invited them. Otherwise, it really does just gets to be a discussion with no end. And as Counselor Williams said, most of the times in those hearings, once the department head speaks, tell them what the city is already committed and is doing, it becomes a moot point. Uh, this usually is just a way to get out more information and to quiet the noise of the citizens, because they don't know what is actually going on.
And, Mr. President, um, you know, a few of us have town halls, like, counselors hate myself, but it's not really, we don't have enough time to get their input, because we're answering questions. Department heads are answering questions when the mayor does it, so we really don't have time for the citizens to really tell us what they're looking for, if that makes sense. Um, so.
Counselor Abbott.
There we go. There is just a woeful lack of knowledge of how the city operates. You know, every one of us has been in a neighborhood meeting where we've been blamed for the trash not being pick up, picked up in the sewer, not being fixed. And, you know, I think Mr. Henderson today was thoroughly confused about what our jobs are, and most residents are. So, you know, if we do, um, these budget workshops or prequels or something, it's really just to educate people on how things actually work instead of how they assume they work, because rarely am I ever asked to change, to do legislation, which is our job. Uh, and our job is also to approve all spending, but that's after the mayor has proposed it. So, to me, these type of events would be as much education as they would be people coming and pleading for money, because I was here when that was what we had at the budget hearing, was people coming and asking for cash. For whatever their issue was, they wanted money, and the council was supposed to give it to them. And that wasn't pleasant either. So now, no matter which way we go, we, when we could modify the budget, it was a mess. And when we can't modify the budget, it's a mess, it's just a mess. But, uh, hearing from people ahead of time what their expectations are would give the administration an idea also of some things that are of concern to residents. Because, to me, the residents are the only ones who count in this thing. We're so busy up here doing things that really don't benefit our residents, and the things that touch them at home are what they care about. Do the police come in a hurry when something horrible happens? Does the fire department get here in time? You know, is the street a flooded lake? You know, is there a giant pothole that just swallowed my car? Those are the things residents care about, and the residents are the people who vote for all of us. So it doesn't seem like rocket science for us to provide at least some of what the residents want while we're funding all these other things that the residents wonder what we're thinking. So, um, you know, to me, I I I think it's a great idea, I just think we ought to start in October, because if we wait till January, it's over. You know, kiss it goodbye, it's over. So we've really got to get started, I think, like, October would be good, because in November, we have Thanksgiving.
Right.
And turkeys. Lots of turkeys.
Pro-TM Alexander.
Well, thank you. Um, first, I want to start by thanking you, Counselor Smithman, as the Budget and Finance Chair. I believe you, uh, took a good listen to some of the things that we were asking to do to improve our process, again, to make it more participatory by, um, our residents. I think I totally agree with Counselor Abbott. Perhaps this focus is now would be generated more towards the education piece and, uh, what this process is and isn't. Um, I do appreciate Counselor Abbott for the, just the reminder of what we do, how it touches what goes on in my house, or that individual's house, and the reminder of the things that are most important. So I do like the process that you're going by, or the creation of this, um, process. I just wonder, as an action item, do you want us to give you that feedback? Or do we now need to start looking at working with the administration on what those dates would be for the, um, the departmental budget? I don't know what the combo is, hearings or whatever, when the departments make their, um, uh, wishes known to the administration, yes. And then how we can line that up to make this timeframe, even though we know we're starting late, but make this timeframe. Uh, I just hate it when we see residents come in and they just really want to know about the budget, and we're we're already behind, or we're already outside of that window, where we could have that dialogue with the mayor and with the finance team to, um, because, again, by law, once we are handed that budget, then our vote then then is either up or down, or whatever. Thank you. So next steps, or what you think of?
Yeah, well, I I wanted to share some thoughts, too. So, uh, I do think the education, uh, component is is really critical. Um, you know, there's a reason why our PIO staff has developed a, uh, Municipal Civics one oh one handbook, um, because it's needed. We spend a lot of time explaining that sort of stuff to folks. Uh, so when you get down to the level of of, um, the budget process, I mean, I think a lot of us didn't understand how it worked until we got here and we're in the midst of it. Um, so I definitely agree that we, uh, need to do that. I I really like the idea of, um, asking our PIO team to put together a short video that explains that. Uh, maybe there can be a booklet version of that that we can share, um, with folks that aren't online. But then I, you know, I think about, uh, also, part of this conversation is, uh, identifying what the city's priorities should be. And, um, I think back to last Thursday, when the mayor mayor gave his presentation, his blueprint, uh, presentation. And he, um, explained, you know, the the metaphor that he uses is, you know, uh, a grandmother living in a household, looking at the vacant lot next door, and the cracked sidewalk out in front, and the pothole in the street beyond that. Um, and also talking about, um, you know, various education initiatives from the Page Powell's program, um, to the Financial Literacy, uh, program. Um, and I'm I'm wondering if, uh, you know, we ought to ask the mayor, you know, like, in the context of the budget, explain to us, you know, how your budget proposal aligns with all of those things that you've explained to us. That's just a thought, you know. I think that the, perhaps the council, you know, needs to have an equivalent, uh, vision. Um, and of course, you know, our vision has to align with, to some extent, with what the mayor, you know, wants to accomplish as well. Those are just my thoughts.
I think Valerie just laid out my vision.
So.
Just FYI.
Yeah. Counselor Abbott, you want to refresh us? So, starting, you know, we're late this time around.
I just love this. Um, yeah, I I, my thought has always been, s- since I walked in the door with that very unusual first council, that we need to pay more attention and put more emphasis on the residents and the neighborhoods they live in. They're the ones who stayed, whether they did it on purpose or whether they had to. They're the ones who've stayed with us. Everybody else outside the city of Birmingham, they're very nice people. But they're not the people we serve. And we often spend all our time, or a lot of our time, doing things that aren't our business. You know, our business is public safety and public, well, you know, the public safety section of the budget, which gets most of the which gets most of the money. But the things that touch the residents at home or what they care about, when we start funding football and arenas and, you know, all kinds of things. It just, they don't understand what the heck we're thinking about. We tell them economic development, their eyes glaze over because their street's still a wreck. Their sidewalks are still cracked, their lights are out. You know, the police don't come when they call them or they come so long that the guys, you know, in, in, you know, Forestdale by the time he, the police get there. So there's a lot of frustration amongst residents. So, you know, my thing is do things that benefit your residents, not today, but for the next 10 years. You know, get some of these things taken care of that are actually the city's job. Instead of all the fluffy fun stuff, which I know is fluffy and fun, but it doesn't benefit our residents in any way that they can figure out. Yes, it may benefit them if, if we have some of these accoutrements. But they want to know what we're going to do for them, like in their block. And, and what we're going to do for their lives to make them better, to make living in the Birmingham a, a pleasure, like shopping at Publix. Um, a pleasure instead of a struggle. So, so I just, I would like to see us put more emphasis on our residential neighborhoods and try to make the residents happy that they stuck around in Birmingham.
And Mr. President, and this isn't really, this isn't not to the mayor's office or anything, it's just, you know, we're two separate bodies. And so I don't know if we just need to do more of an assessment on these programs, more with amongst the nine of us to see, do we need to continue funding? Can we see how we can shift some money, make a suggestion to shift some money to something else or, and it's okay if our priorities don't match the mayor's, like it's fine, it may not always, because he may think, you know, like the fund center may need more funding and we may think, uh, code enforcement may need more funding, for example. Um, there are other cities, because I know New York, I talked to a councilperson for this and their council did all day retreat on their budget priorities. And there are different cities that have, um, vision statements. I know Jeff, um, I know we talked about what we would want central staff to do. And maybe that's, that time one of Jeff's strengths was helping with just a broad vision he's done for us in the past. Him helping us to expand on it, um, Miss Kidd, continuing that process. So, um, just, just really making sure that we're doing our due diligence to our residents, so.
Right. Okay. Another thought that comes to mind, so definitely developing Birmingham, say, you know, as a sports and entertainment destination has been part of our strategy that, you know, and part of where a significant amount of city dollars has gone towards and, um, you know, Birmingham's a, in terms of our revenue, um, we're very dependent on economic activity uh, to fund things like the police department and the fire department and street paving and so on and so forth. Um, but I don't necessarily know that your average resident understands the connection between, um, hosting the Birmingham Bowl and getting a sidewalk fixed. Uh, so, you know, perhaps one of the things that we could, uh, do as a council, um, because ultimately we don't have control over the, the budget, um, is, you know, ask or an explanation of the economic development strategy, you know, and how that relates back to the priority of, uh, revitalizing neighborhoods.
I also think something's good. I don't know if it's in the budget. Where once we establish our priorities, maybe if we do a mailer or something to touch those residents who aren't able to make neighborhood meetings, like I said before, don't watch Council Me and Nine Thirty on Facebook because really those are the ones that vote honestly. Um, and I don't know, just trying to reach more people. Cause if you ask, like even your friends that still live in Birmingham, hey, do you know about this? If it's not social media, they don't know. If we ask our grandmothers, if it's not word of mouth, they don't know. So trying to see where is that disconnect between us giving the residents, um, information and then them receiving it? That's another big part.
Okay. Councilmore?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, I think it's undeniable the fact that, you know, we've had a lot of great things happening in the city of Birmingham, um, in terms of different events, world games, just attractions. Uh, but kind of going back to, you know, some of the things that Councilwoman Abbott talked about, uh, with those basic needs being met. Um, I mostly want to make sure that people feel proud about the city that they live in and the neighborhood that they live in. Uh, was having a conversation with somebody just this morning about, um, how young family, um, and I was trying to encourage them, you know, to find out what part of the city they wanted to live in. And they were like, yeah, my wife was like, we, we gotta live on the outskirts, you know? Um, and there's been several conversations that I've had like that where I'm trying to encourage people to move to the city because I too care about education. Um, I understand that the property taxes that are paid uh, into the city go towards, uh, impacting our educational system and providing those resources that are needed for our schools to be successful. And so, all that being said, I think that if we focus on the things that, you know, uh, residents care about, right? People would be beating down the doors trying to get into the city of Birmingham. Um, I'm glad that we're back in the chambers, uh, because now I can see, you know, the statement on the wall, right? That says the people are the city. Um, and it's a great reminder to us to, to just remember that. Uh, so I'm excited about, you know, this new budget process that's going to go in place. Because it will be participatory, uh, for our citizens. And I also believe that, you know, we can build some, some real cheerleaders uh, to serve as, you know, word of mouth for us in the community. So, kudos.
Yeah. So in terms of, of action items, I think the, the things that we agree on and we can move forward with are, um, the education pieces. So, a, a video, uh, a print piece. Um, and I think you mentioned one other thing. Um, that was.
Social media?
Yeah, short video booklet and then council vision. Uh, yeah, once we get our priorities, the council vision, um, that's, we'll probably just have to meet. So the residents can know what we, what we think is important. And that could be after the town hall meetings. And, you know, we may already know the issues, but it's different when we still hear it from people. Cause our five, maybe four out of the five could be something that our residents want. And just really being, just represent people really, um, giving people a voice. Uh, I think there have been different organizations that have tried it in Birmingham. But, you know, this is our job to make sure our people feel like they have a voice and get these basics services back as well. Um, I agree with Councilmore. Uh, we don't want more people to leave Birmingham because those basic services aren't being met.
So, um, I think, you know, one of the things that would be challenging is, is to have a, like a series of town halls. But I definitely agree that there should probably be a public meeting on the front end of the process. So in addition to a video booklet, a mail out, um, having a public meeting where we walk people through the budget process and explain and, uh, give opportunity for folks to, uh, ask questions and just better understand how, how the system works. Um, I feel like that, that's a pretty easy lift in terms of us being at the end of December and the budget process really starting, you know, February for sure. Um, so.
It's more like a test run, like you said. That's good. That's what I think about this year, just really being a test run. And then once we get to October twenty twenty four, we kind of know what to do. And maybe we could do this something like at the Boutwell where we have more space to do it or the Crossflex, so, um, yeah.
Okay. So who am I going to? Jeff or?
They have the eighteen through the twenty second. The eighteen through the twenty second.
Excuse me, can we get the dates again? I'm sorry.
Eighteen through the twenty second.
Yeah, we're going to formally send everything out with the, the department budget hearings of the March eighteenth through the twenty second.
Okay, thank you.
So Chief Mitchell, what communications happened with the department heads in advance of those presentations? Does a memo go out to those department heads asking them to?
So it's the same thing that the council, you know, we consider the council department also, so they get the same correspondence that, that, um, other departments get. Um, I do want to note, and I know I'd be remiss not to say this because I, I was on that side. I was with, on the council side way before I was on the administration side. So I get the frustration of it, but I can wholeheartedly say that this administration has tried to be very open with this council administration and know what the priorities are. Because if you really think about it, participatory budgeting is every day, like we hear the same thing that the council members hear. And I think that's why the mayor always asks the council, what are your priorities? Because you hear that from your district and from your constituents, just like we hear every day from the people that contact our office. And by us not having the ability to print money down in, in the basement in the print shop, it's hard to kind of fit everything into a, you know, a bucket. So we try not to make this decision-making a silo. We want to make sure that we hear everybody's voice when we build out a budget, knowing that the largest share of our budget is our employee base. So I don't want to be, you know, let it be known that we just don't hear, we, we hear everybody. But the thing of trying to fit everything into this small budget that we're very, being very conservative every year. Because as you know, the president, like a lot of our funding comes from our sales and use tax and our business license based off of the things that we produce in the city. That brings events and things of that nature to produce money and produce tax revenue to the city. So, like I said, I don't want to be remiss at the, the thing that, you know, we're making decisions in a silo because we're not, we want to make sure that everybody's voice is heard from not just the council, but from the public as we build out our budget.
Yeah, I th- I think a lot of our frustration comes from the fact that we have this, uh, mandated public meeting that's, you know, takes, supposed to, or does take place after the mayor has proposed his budget. And, you know, the, I, I guess what gets the expectation, um, at least from some members of the public is that, you know, if they attend that public meeting and voice some concerns, that they could impact, you know, what the proposed budget looks like. And I think what the desire of the council is, is to, you know, really give the public an opportunity to have some input on the front end of that process. So well before a proposed budget gets put together and presented, um, we, we, we want to, um, we don't want folks to come to a public hearing on the back end of the process and then be frustrated, um, by us telling them, well, you know, the budget is what it is unless the mayor agrees to change it, it's not going to change.
We, we actually agree with you. So I, I think it's very noble that the council wants to have something beforehand so that helps us understand the priorities, so we can build it from that.
Councilwoman Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Councilor Smithman, uh, because I know you and I have had many discussions about participatory budgeting. Um, and I'm hearing you guys talk about this educational piece. Are you going to be in the educational piece telling people what participatory budgeting is? Cause a lot of people may not understand that. It is a lot of videos out here telling people about the participatory budgeting process. Cause we don't want people walking in a situation blindly and then, you know, like Chief Mitchell say, scolding and screaming, you want a controlled environment. Um,
Well, you know, the true standard for participatory budgeting are how a lot of municipalities do it, is they out set aside a portion of their revenue, let's just say ten million dollars.
So, yeah.
Um, and then there's a, you know, a public process, uh, to identify, you know, how that ten million dollars gets spent. So in the context of what we're doing, I don't think, you know, we're at the stage where we're ready to do that form of participatory budgeting.
Can, I would like to add to that if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
You're, you're a hundred percent correct when it comes to that. If you, um, city in Nashville has a budget around three point two billion dollars and they set aside ten million dollars for their participatory budget, uh, efforts. And it's the same way. They had a list of almost fifty odd projects that the community voted on and that ten million got dispersed into that, that type of, you know, uh, project. But if you look at it at this point, like a ten million hit to our five hundred fifty million dollar budget is a large chunk of our, our budget. It would be great if we had a three point two million, billion dollar budget then, that would just be a blimp on the, on the map. But, you know, that's something we can look forward to in the future. But I think it's just something that we have to kind of like weigh versus the priorities of the, as Councilwoman Abbott noted, the day-to-day service of what our citizens are looking for, police protection, garbage collection, things of that nature.
And Mr. President, it may not be ten million because that's, that's a lot, honestly. And yes, I think when we have those town halls or even our first public hearing, we can explain that. But we're breaking down the budget, like how Chief Mitchell and Mayor Woodfin have told us, you know, was it seventy-six percent of our budget is goes towards employees? And so you have twenty-four percent that goes towards everything else, so they can understand, um, I think it was explained in one of my town halls about the budget and they honestly quieted down a lot of the noise. Cause they were like, oh, I understand. Oh, I didn't know. And I want to say this about our priorities. So we were asked, actually asked to make a choice, if y'all remember, was, and we had to take some money from street paving so it can go towards something else. That's what I mean about us identifying that priorities. Cause some years it could be we want more money towards, uh, weed abatement. So just, just being realistic and really not being asked when we have those one-on-one meetings. But thinking about that ahead of time, and this is just a test run, a process, trying to figure things out. Um, I just want to make sure we start now and not in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, when, you know, so.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we, um, have some action on items that were taken away. So in terms of the education, um, video booklet mail out. And do we want to agree that we're going to do some sort of public meeting? Perhaps in January, um, to sort of do this in-person education? January, February?
I think, yes, of course. I think we need to be sure about the dates when we get the booklet. We are given the booklet to put together the council's budget and then get it back to them to start their process. So our date would be, we need to know the same date that the, our information goes over. So if our information is going over January the twenty eighth, we now know we need to have all of this stuff done by that time. So Mr. Mitchell or Jeff, uh, if you know what date the book goes back over, we know the budget hearings are March eighteenth through the twenty second. But that would comprise all of the information being in hand. So when is the information to go back to the mayor's office?
I'm not sure, but that, that schedule was shortened this year. I think it was two weeks, I think, before the presentation.
Yeah, it's, we shortened it so we can include the council in, in the whole process. Because last year we had the conflict of NLC, so that's why we pushed the department hearings back so they can be more involved.
So what date is the packet due back?
I don't have that in front of me. That's why I said, I was sending it out formally. I don't have all the dates right in front of me. I didn't know what the conversation was going to be about.
So if, when, when we get that date, I think we can build into that date. And we can build into that date the video, the booklet and the mail out in the public hearing. And so we might have a public hearing, um, we can get, I know we can get the booklet. Uh, Cody does really good with that and Cam is all over the video. So we can, we can get the content for that. It would be, the big piece would be the public hearing and. and correlating that information from the public hearing as to what you all feel needs to go over with your request by the time they're asking for it. So if you could give us, Mr. Mitchell will give us that date and we'll start working on the content and give you guys some suggested dates based on what they tell us. Is that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to understand the relationship between the booklet date and us having a public hearing on the front end.
Sir.
I'm just trying to understand the, the booklet that you're talking about and, and the date that that goes out. How does that relate to us having a public hearing?
Well, it's, it's, it's your objective. If you want the public hearing to be about education, also, I would want to get the video in the booklet ahead of your public hearing, because it might in and of itself, with them having information, it might be, and forgive me, less noisy. They will be coming more informed about the process if we can get it out to them. But now it's just going to depend on how much lead time we have, but it looks like we ought to have at least five weeks.
Yeah, I think so.
And then like a future action item, really the marketing plan. And maybe, Mr. President and Madam President, y'all can talk to the councillors to see what they would like. Trying to see how we can reach out more to people than the ten that keep showing up or really making sure that, you know, our residents, that we, a lot of times we don't see unless we go to their home, actually showing up or giving us insight. Um, so that's something to think about as well when we do this.
Yeah, I, I agree. There's a lot of room for improvement in terms of collecting public input, you know? I think about, uh, places like, uh, St. Louis, Missouri, who I visited a few years ago, um, where they routinely have, um, surveys that the, the city is sending out to, to gather public input, even down to the level of, you know, identifying, um, specific sections, sections of sidewalk that need to be repaired and that sort of thing. And, and sort of, you know, something akin to the type of information that we're collecting through our C Click Fix system, you know, and scoring projects based on the number of citizen reports and, uh, so on and so forth. But, you know, introducing some data component into, uh, identifying those priorities. All right. I think we've come to the end of that discussion. Is there any, uh, new or old business that needs to be discussed? If not, will entertain a motion to adjourn? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.